Meeting's all over.
Hello and welcome to the Select Board meeting for December 11, 2023. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to apply from the United States of America to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We are going to take things a little out of order tonight because we are doing open forum at 6:30 and it's six. Our cheerleading, winning cheerleading team was supposed to be here tonight, but they couldn't make it. So, we're going to go right into action items and then we'll go to open forum at 6:30. And we have a lot of action items and our clerk, Mr. Spogon, isn't here.
He's not?
How are you, Mr. Vice Chair?
I thought I saw him over there.
Get a bottle of water?
I thought I saw him over there.
He left when he saw that it was license renewal night.
License renewal night, yeah.
Okay. Madam Chair, I make a motion to appoint three at-large members to the Public Safety Building Committee for the period December 11, 2023 through no designated term.
Ooh.
That means, once you join us, we own you.
I don't know if all three of these gentlemen are here.
Michael Cirillo?
Yep.
And Dan Sampson?
So, we're just waiting for Charles Heath.
Okay.
Oh, Dan Sampson.
Dan Sampson's not here?
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're just waiting for Dan Sampson.
Okay. Do you guys want to just come down and just?
Why don't we wait for Dan and then we'll move on?
All right. We'll go back when all of you are here, what he said.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to vote to award a contract to Advantage Drug Testing, 62 Elm Street, Indover, Massachusetts, 01810, for a three-year period from January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2026.
Second. Any discussion?
None here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to discuss and vote an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Holbrook for dispatch operations.
Are we passing that over?
I think we should discuss it and then we'll pass it over. Let's have the two chiefs talk about this.
Chiefs? Let's get this on a, it's a good idea. Let's get this on a public record so people understand what it is that's being proposed.
Okay. I don't have documentation in front of me.
That's okay.
But I can briefly run you, give you a rundown on it.
Not so much documentation, but just why?
Yeah.
You know, why this is something you both think is a good idea, so people can understand.
With the direction of public safety is going to regionalization. So, we looked at it hard and with this opportunity to go to one of the regional centers, the Holbrook Regional Center, we can save some money over a period of five years. They're better suited. They just received like a $17 million grant and they already have 19 agencies that they're dispatching for currently. Right now, they just signed a contract or two contracts for two more. So, it'll come back with a cost savings to the town over the next five years, approximately $1.2 million if, you know, we work out the figures with the HREC, but give or take that amount.
Right. And there's money from the state?
How it works is, right now, we currently receive funding from the Mass 911 state grant, et cetera, that helps train our dispatches in our offices. So, what would happen is if we became a part of a regionalization, all the state grant money goes to them. So, we wouldn't have to write the grants anymore for that or oversee the grants on the 911. They assume that as a part of the agreement.
Saves you administering.
Yeah. And that's how they're, and that's how they're funded, through the 911 and the state grants, et cetera. So, it would be a win-win pretty much for the town.
And maybe just explain for people who might be worried that their 911 call is going to go to somewhere else and not here in East Bridgewater, like just explain why that's really not the impact that it used to be.
Yeah. And the chief can also comment on this as well, but if you look at a map of the United States, pretty much New England's the only area that isn't regionalization.
We like our small town.
Makes sense. It's cost-effective and.
Silos.
I mean, it's really, I mean, the 911 calls, it's not matter where they're answered. They will have officers and fire personnel within the town. So, it's not, the dispatching is, you know, they're more professional over there. I'm not saying our dispatches aren't professional in the sense that with the ability that they have to dispatch, like I said, for 19 agencies, they have a $3.3 million facility that's state-of-the-art. They'll come in and look at our infrastructure. Anything that needs to be updated will be a part of it as well. So, like I said, it's a win-win. And just to reassure the town, I mean, the calls will still go answered in the same time manner. If not, even better.
Okay. Mike, you've talked a couple of times about five year. What's happening for the first five and then what happens after that?
So, I have that right here. So, for years one, two, and three, State 911 pays 100% of the costs to run the dispatch center. On year four, they pay 50%. On year five, they pay 25%. On year six, the town owns the full amount as they would if we were doing our own dispatch like we're doing now.
Okay.
The price goes up 3% per year, starting with year one. And one of the, one of the important things that's not really mentioned much is, over the course of five or six years, communications equipment, IT equipment tends to get old and need to be replaced. Right now, for East Bridgewater, we would own that. With the regional centers, State 911 would more than likely own that and they would pay for the upgrades at little to no charge to East Bridgewater. So, they're going to come in and they're going to do an assessment of all our infrastructure anyways. Records management, software for fire police, mobile and portal radio equipment, fire station alerting, fire alarm signaling, mobile data terminals for the police and fire, all these things that we use on a regular basis that State 911 would end up either paying to upgrade, update, or buy new. Take the fire station, fire records management. Technically, I'm on IMC right now with the police. And it's not really for fire. It's not really that great of a program. And so, Holbrook has a program, I think they've called Red Alert, and a lot of fire departments have gone to this. And it's kind of more, it's more geared towards fire where IMC was more geared towards police. But even IMC, I think they're kind of going, they're trying to do different things too.
The technology's changed.
Yeah, trying to.
They're going more web-based.
More cloud-based and all that. So, there's a lot more than just someone dial 911 and pick somebody, answer the phone and not know where Vinton's Corner is or whatever. Not sure people in this town who are new that even worked for police and fire at this stage would know where Vinton's Corner is. It's just, times have changed in the last 30 years.
Well, that's, I mean, back in the day when we got on, like the chief said, back in the day when we got on, it would be landmarks. We'd go by landmarks like, you know, the Cotton Gin or, you know.
Right.
But nowadays, everything's become more professionalized anyways. And a lot of the dispatches that we have now aren't from town and they're younger and they wouldn't know half the landmarks. So, and everything now is like technology-driven. So, a call comes up, it pulls it up where it is. So, they just pretty much, so that's how it's evolved in that way. Right.
Other questions?
No, it's, it's just something that, you know, we just want to make sure that people out there understood. But I think, one, I think we need the full board here to vote. And two, I just, I believe both chiefs are in front of the Finance Committee tomorrow to which plane is programmed.
Correct.
And then between now and the end of the year, we will call another meeting and Zoom meeting or whatever and vote on it at that point.
Yeah. And we could give a more, I mean, we do have a more formal presentation. So, I mean, if you need to elaborate on it. We kind of have lived it tonight, but I mean, just to break it down for you. But it's a win-win for the town.
Why don't you do that for FinCom?
Yeah. It really is a win-win for the community. It really is. I mean, overall, we looked at it hard over the last few months. The fire chief, myself, the deputy chief, and the IT director, we took a ride over there. We did a tour of their facility, which is absolutely beautiful, state-of-the-art. Like I said, they're going to come in and any of our infrastructure that needs replacing is a part of the cost. So, it's, like I said, it's a win-win.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
If need be for that meeting that we're going to have, if you need the director of the Holbrook Regional Communications Center as well, I talked to him earlier. He asked if he should come tonight. And I told him, no, I didn't think it was necessary tonight. But if you'd like to have him there as well, if you have any questions or whatever, I'm sure he'd be more than willing to attend.
Okay.
We'll talk about that when we set up the meeting.
Mostly, we're just looking for FinCom to give us back a recommendation from them about what their feelings are. Because it does save upfront, but then, you know, it
It levels out.
We'll need to plan accordingly.
It levels out. The cost savings is the first five years and then it levels out to pretty much where we would be.
Right.
You know, right now, currently. But in the meantime, you get your infrastructure replaced and you, like I said, that's the direction all the funding's going anyways. The State 911 funding might get a little more scarce, so the regional, the regional centers get it first. So.
Okay. All right. Thanks, chiefs.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Tim, do you want to just stay right there?
I might as well stay there.
I'll stay with you.
Oh, solidarity. Love it.
All fire stuff?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. He's, I'm out.
Take care.
So much for solidarity.
Wow. So, based on that.
I gotta keep an eye on the road.
Yep.
We will pass over Action Item Three for a future meeting before the end of the year.
Yep.
Madam Chair, vote to allow the fire chief, Tim Haren, to auction surplus property to include one boat, one hovercraft, one utility trailer and one kayak.
Second. Any discussion?
Chief, what are we doing?
So, we received a new boat, or boats, on a combined trailer. A 16-foot aluminum and a 12-foot semi-rigid hull inflatable to replace the 63-year-old aluminum boat trailer that we currently use that is a, it's a V hull and trying to get somebody out of the water, Robins Pond, and over the, I won't use boat terms, and get them over the side is, I've had people get hurt doing that. So, this new one, you pull up, you drop a platform and you just pull them right on the boat. It's great. Anyways, we've had that. Everyone's trained on it. It's good to go. Obviously, though, but, you know, we're limited with space, so these other two need to go. The hovercraft, great idea, great concept. I was actually in favor of it 15 years ago and we got it. But every time the thing leaves, it cost about $2,000 to, you know, rebuild the Rotax motor that's in it and it doesn't quite, operationally, it's not quite what we anticipated it would be. So, getting these two new combined boats, the town meeting approved about two years ago, will wipe out the need for these other two. The utility trailer is just a small little red box that we don't use. And it just sits there and collects on its nests. Get rid of that. And a kayak that we recovered from Robins Pond about three years ago, there was a storm. Somebody called and said there was a kayak on Robins Pond, but nobody had it. So, we did a full, you know, water rescue response. There was no victims. And I said, get the thing out of here and we'll bring it back to the station.
And it's been there ever?
It's sat out there for like three years. I asked Chief Jenkins to run a query to see if anyone had reported it missing and nobody had for the past three years. I spoke with John Clifford, town council, and told him the deal, what the deal was and what's the best way to go about it. And he said, at this point, probably best to just art, to surplus, you know, auction it off.
So, you auction it off? Is that what you do?
I am. Yeah. All of these will be going to Auctions International, who I use for auction.
Any other questions?
I'll say.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the request of Fire Chief Tim Haren for the quarterly ambulance billing abatements through November 2023 in the amount of $37,207.42.
Second. Discussion?
None here.
This is your usual.
It is.
All in favor?
It's a little higher this round because we, I, I had to put it off a month the last time we did it. So, that's why the number's a little bit higher than we normally would see.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the request of Fire Chief Tim Haren to amend the ambulance billing rates as provided in the attachment effective January 1, 2024. We have not increased ambulance billing since July 1, 2020. This is needed to cover the increase in cost for supplies, equipment, and staff to operate the ambulance service.
Second. Discussion? Chief, do you want to just?
Yeah, real quick. So, back in July of 2024, we sat before the board and we went to increase ambulance billing to Medicare plus 300%. And then, we hadn't really done much with it until now. But the costs of actually running an ambulance service have gone up considerably, mainly in the Supplies Department, where I used to budget like $14,000 a year. Now, I'm budgeting like, I think next year is like $52.5. So, this needs to offset, this billing will offset those increased costs as well as, you know, the cost of manpower and all that with contract changes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
None here.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think that.
Thank you.
All three people now for the.
Everyone's here now.
The Public Safety Building Committee are here. So, Michael, Dan, and Charles, do you want to just come down to the table? Just need one more chair. Hi.
I don't have to do the action item.
What's that?
Have to do the action item.
Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve three at-large members to the Public Safety Building Committee for the period December 11, 2023 through no designated term. Michael Cirillo, Dan Sampson, Charles Heath.
Second.
Just so you understand what no designated.
No designated term? They owe you.
We owe you until you move out of town.
This is an appointment for life. Do you want to just each go down and just say, like, you know, who you are and why you're interested in doing this? And then we'll, great. Why don't you start?
I'm Dan Sampson. I'm a resident here for about two years. My family's been in East Bridgewater for, I'm in his thirties. So, I'm like fourth generation with my girls. So, I figure it's time to get back a little bit. So, I've just always been here. So, I'm in construction, obviously, as superintendent. So, I figured, why not put my brain to use for it?
Great.
Pick away.
Mike Cirillo, I've been at East Bridgewater about two years as well. I have a background in construction management and grew up with a family in the fire service. So, it's a good day.
Charlie Heath, born and raised in East Bridgewater. Parents were born and raised in East Bridgewater. Construction all my life, project management, superintendent, MEP coordinator. Just wanted to get back a little bit more if I could.
Great. Good background, good mix of newer and older members of the community. That's great. Questions from you?
No, again, reading your letters requesting to join this committee, I'm very impressed. Everyone has the background that I think this group needed. Okay, we have the town people here that have been involved in this over the years, but we're needed as someone in the capacity that you people always already have in your outside interest. And I like to say, we're not kidding, no designated term. This project could go on for a while. I'm sure that's been explained to you on what they're trying to do with the central school, I mean, with the safety, urging everything together. Other towns have done it. And I'm sure you all have an opportunity to talk to them, see how they set it up, see what they were looking for, and see how they completed their project. So, welcome aboard.
Yeah. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Oh, wait. No, we've, we already voted.
Could you just advise them against one of the town clerk's office?
Yes.
I was about to do that. Thanks, chief.
So, I'll send you guys a letter and it'll state, go to the town clerk's office to give your oath of office. And then, from there, someone from the Public Safety Building Committee will reach out to you about next steps and meetings and things like that.
Chief, do you know what the next meeting is?
Honestly, with the holidays coming up, probably I'm thinking January, early January.
Okay. So, you've got time. Just make sure you do that before you go to a meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All right. We still have a few minutes.
Your little girls at home, so.
Number seven? Yep.
Number seven, discuss and vote for flag policy. Motion to approve.
Second. Do we need to read this or is it, I mean, it's in the packet, but it's not in the agenda?
If you want it added to the motion.
I think that's.
Yes.
You have it right there.
The East, as a part of the motion, East Bridgewater Select Board has authorized the following flags to be flown on the flag post under the jurisdiction of the Select Board. Flag of the United States, flag of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, flag of the Town of East Bridgewater, flag honoring POW MIA service members. No other flag shall be allowed on said flag post as the poles are not intended, nor have they ever been intended, to establish or serve as a forum for public expression.
Second. Thank you. We haven't had any requests. The idea is just to have a policy in place because it came to the town administrator's attention that we didn't have one. So, this is a.
And again, it's, we're not trying to stop anyone. We're just trying to, you know, this is what the town recognizes. We've always recognized it. And that's, we don't want to start opening. So, we have requests every week, every month, every, and we need more flag posts and everything else. This is what we honor for the Town of East Bridgewater and this is what our policy should stay.
Right. And it's not anything new.
Right.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the change of offices, directors, LLC manager from the Commercial Club of East Bridgewater, pending submission of DOR Certificate of Good Standing, DUA Certificate of Compliance, and Articles of Organization from the Secretary of the Commonwealth.
Second. Rebecca, I looked through the paperwork. Everything's all set.
Yes.
This one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, approve the common vicula license name change in location farm. Country Cafe and Pizza, Michael Salmanetti, manager, 210 Pawn Street, 2. Sophie's Italian Food, 6 Central Street.
Second. Any discussion?
Where was 6 Central Street?
I don't know.
It's on Skinner's.
The bank? Oh, okay.
Was there a date when this change was supposed to take place? Was it open at?
There's nothing in the action items.
Yeah, they're not in there yet.
They're still working on the building.
Right.
They won't be. I just had a conversation with them three days ago.
I'll look back at the paperwork.
They're trying to, they're trying to push it along, contractor issues. But they hope when it's felt like January 1st.
Well, that'll be nice to see something in there that people can use.
They're great down there.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, motion to approve common vicula license Restoration Coffee, Mattwood, manager, 412 Bedford Street.
Second. This isn't new.
It is. They haven't had a common vicula, which we just found out about. So, now they do.
All right. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, approve the renewal of the following alcoholic licenses for the period ending December 31, 2024. Package Stores All Alcoholic as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Package Store Wine and Malt as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
General on premises, wine and malt.
That's the new one.
That's South Shore.
Yeah, that's the new one.
Cinema, right.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Club All Alcoholic. Again, it's just the two, Commercial and Ideal Club as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Common Vicula All Alcoholic as printed.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Action item 12, approve the renewal of the following common vicula licenses for the period ending June 30, December 31, 2024 as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
13. Motion to approve the renewal of the following entertainment licenses for the period ending December 31, 2024 as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the renewal of the following public entertainment license for the period ending December 31, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
15. Approval of the renewal of the following coin-operated auto amusement license for the period ending December 31, 2024.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
16. Approve the, to renew the following licenses for the period ending January 1, 2025, Class 1 as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Class 2 as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Class 3 as printed.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
19. Motion to discuss and approve the schedule of a hearing to revoke Class 2 and Class 3 license, All Foreign Auto Sales Service Incorporated and All Foreign Auto Salvage Incorporated, 300 Thatcher Street for non-compliance property inspection.
Second. Any discussion?
Chief?
This is for unsafe working conditions?
Tell that's not them.
All foreign.
All foreign.
Yeah, they need to do it for, for here. The conditions inside that building are.
So, they'll get a letter from us and then they'll have an opportunity to address them and then we'll do a hearing, I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just on that note, we did assign inspections, well, we feel, in concurrent with the same license.
Discussion and vote to schedule a hearing to revoke licenses for non-compliance business certificate. V12 Ventures LLC, 60 Franklin Street, South Shore Nutrition, 649 Oak Street.
Second.
So, these two.
Are discussions same?
We have just not received a business certificate for these two licenses.
Okay.
So, if you want to approve the license pending receipt of the business certificate, you could do that.
Yeah, I'll admit, I'll add to it that we will.
Approve if the paperwork is.
Yeah.
If we get it before we schedule a hearing.
Yep. In the club alcohol, that was approved. It does get automatically renewed every year. But for the Ideal Club, we'd like to request that you set a hearing date also for the Ideal Club for not being in compliance for their fire escape.
Or their what?
Their fire escape.
Under, under club all alcoholic?
Yes. Their fire escape is not up to code and they've been notified.
Okay.
Multiple times. So, if you could just schedule a hearing for that one as well.
Okay.
For the same date, January 8.
Okay.
Chief?
We also haven't been given access to that both the two years to perform an inspection of the interior as well.
So, can we, would that be included in the fire escape and also an inside inspection?
Yep.
Okay.
So, make a motion to set a hearing for the Ideal Club for fire escape and inside inspection as soon as possible.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And did we vote on 20? I think we didn't vote.
I don't remember.
We, we motioned and seconded, but all in favor to schedule a hearing on those, to approve the licenses if the paperwork comes in or schedule a hearing if it doesn't. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. There was one.
And we have an additional action item. Approve the request of East Bridgewater Professional Firefighters Local 2768 to form a sick bank for a member firefighter, Michael Dickinson.
Second. Any discussion? Good idea. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Is that it for action items? Yes. I know. All right. It is 6:30, so we will go to open forum. Is there anybody here for open forum? Chief, we're gonna, I'll let the chief go first.
Real quick, if I might.
I suppose. You did already have.
Glenn Morton from EJM stopped in to my office about two weeks ago. He mentioned he was building a, an area to store electric vehicles that have been involved in car accidents. Electric vehicles are a hot topic right now when they catch fire because it takes about three hours and 15,000 gallons of water to put them out. We're kind of leaning towards just letting them burn. We're kind of leaning towards just letting them burn, quite honestly, but safer if they're just dead and gone. But anyways, he mentioned.
Well, that's how you really feel, chief.
Yeah, he mentioned that he was building this, he was gonna buy, they have these blankets now, fire blankets, that you can cover the car with, that'll snuff the flames.
Okay.
Never really puts the fire out, but it, it does enough that you could move the car to a safer location, whatever. So I told him, I was like, oh, we don't, we don't have those yet, and I have to go to town meeting to get some money to purchase a whole bunch of electric vehicle stuff at the, our next town meeting. So I received a package today from Glenn and his wife Kathy, which is the donation of a, one of these fire blankets for vehicles. They run between $1,500 and $3,000.
Wow.
Just want to publicly thank Mr. Morton and his wife for their generosity.
That's great. Is that reusable, or is it a single time, no, you can?
So what we would do is, we're gonna eventually have one on the three major pieces of apparatus we have, and we're gonna try to get the tow companies to each buy one as well. So if we use ours and they take it, we'll just take theirs and like trade, so we'll always have one available. And Glenn also mentioned that, you know, God forbid we need something, we just swing down to his place and grab his, but apparently by him getting us one, we don't have to do that, so.
That's great.
Much appreciated by Glenn Morton.
Merry Christmas to the fire department and all those electric vehicle owners.
Yeah, thank you.
If I could, just on that, Glenn, I posted on Facebook as well, but Glenn, he also donated lockout kits for all our cruises as well. He just sent us to our station as well, so year to date for 2023, we've done 83 lockouts, and those kits aren't cheap, and.
Right.
He just donated them for our cruises as well, so I just wanted to.
Thank you. Are you leaving? Oh, okay, well, you had your stuff. Might need you for open forum. Don't go anywhere. All right, are you two done now?
Yep.
For now.
All right, open forum, you're here for open forum, correct? All right, why don't you come down to the table?
We actually all on, should we all?
You can if you want, or you can just have one person, it's up to you. Yeah, look, the chief stands alone.
Yeah.
Every time, doesn't it?
Nobody leaves me. So.
You just say your name and address?
Sure, my name is John Irvin, I live at 82 Tardy Terrace.
Michelle Irvin, 82 Tardy Terrace.
Jill Christina, 83 Tardy Terrace.
I just want to hear.
Okay. Hi, Tom. Okay.
So on the corner of Tower Hill and Tardy Terrace, it's a, there's a stop sign and just short story, I mean, to make it short, just, I mean, it's constantly going through it, people going through it constantly.
There's construction from Lopez's area, there's 18, not 18 millers, but they're big dump trucks that make numerous trips during the day, and they never stop at the stop sign. I'm retired now, so I notice it more. I have two grandchildren that live with me that have hearing loss and require hearing aids. He has a child that is autistic that lives next door in the same area.
Yep.
And may I, can I say?
Yes.
He.
Tardy Terrace also.
Yeah, he wears a hearing aid, I almost saw him get hit by a car because he was walking his dog, and people just, it's, they don't stop, and some of the people in the neighborhood have said, it's a stupid stop sign, we're not gonna stop there. And, you know, you tend to take it a little personally when there's little kids playing in the cul-de-sac, and then you must see an adult get hit. And my husband got all this information together, and he.
We've, we've contacted the police multiple, numerous, numerous times. I mean, this is over probably a period of three or four years.
Yeah.
It's just gotten worse and worse. And they have come out and said, yeah, you guys have a serious issue, so.
And that's not even the ones that are drunk or high. These are, you know, these are just people that we know of, and they're like, I'll never stop at that sign. These are business owners that I, it shocks me. And actually, he, actually, we tried to be neighborly and like talk to them, like, we don't know if you know, but, you know, we live up there. This is here, that's there, that's there, and there's issues, so if you could kind of take it easy. And they actually started complaining to us about how bad it is. So the other ones, I don't, you know, there's just like everywhere, there's a a few that don't want to conform to it, and then the building department came out.
No, the highway department.
I'm sorry, I don't know all the politics.
The highway department, they came out, they actually.
They were very nice.
Added another stop sign further down on the road, so you would see the stop and then another stop and.
Yeah, and they put a white line.
They said, the only thing that's gonna actually work is if you put in like speed bumps, and they go, but that'll never, that's never gonna happen.
This is also a bus stop for Central School, Middle School.
Yeah, that's my husband's bus stop.
Oh, it is? Speaking of the bus stop.
He's so nice.
I actually saw a pickup truck drive by the bus as it was stopped with the stop sign, it went around it.
Well, and I can tell you from my husband's experience that that happens probably daily. Yeah. That somebody goes through his red lights, it's unfortunate.
I saw, I saw a Ford pickup, black pickup truck just blow right by it yesterday, and I always see this white Jeep, it's in the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
Keeps going through it all the time, they don't care.
So we did have the, the chief was aware, and I know that they set up some things, I don't know, chief, I don't want to put you on the spot, but can you just sort of tell us?
John, Haines and I have been in discussion about some options we're looking at.
Okay.
But the times I have sent officers up there, most recent one, it's always been a resident. We don't see the traffic, that amount of traffic, I mean, there are some options John and I have talked about, and I'm probably gonna be putting a camera in that area shortly, just to monitor it for a month or so.
Bill, can I be honest? See, we're talking, can I be honest?
Yeah, I know, I know what you're gonna say.
I, my son works in construction, he does, he does telecommunications.
Yeah, there was cameras on the pole that were put up there improperly that we've taken down.
I put them up.
No, I know, I know.
And it worked!
And you can't, you can't have that.
I know, but I'm just trying to say it worked.
So John Haines and I have been in discussion, but every time I have sent officers up there, we're not seeing the violations. Like I said, I had an officer up there last week, he was up there, he stopped two cars, and they were both residents.
Yeah.
So the biggest problem is residents, it's not the dump trucks, it's not the cut through, it's the residents up there that blow right through it, so. That's what I've found based on sending officers up there.
Right, but we're there majority of the time, and we do see constructions of big trucks.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so I'm just saying.
The different, the different times, I'm just saying based on what I've.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
Which every, every time they go up for traffic enforcement, it's logged, it's monitored.
But another thing too, though, they might see a car or whatever.
I've had a couple of cars up there that you wouldn't notice as well.
Okay.
Monitoring for me.
You can park in my driveway anytime you want.
Yeah, you can park in our driveways.
Cars that you wouldn't recognize, I promise you that.
You can park in our driveways and not the surface.
So.
Yeah, so I mean, we were looking at officers, John and I have had some good discussions, we talked about a flashing stop and some other options, but we'll definitely, we'll, we can follow up, you know, because what we're talking about, like, now, like I said, is we're gonna deploy a camera or two and monitor it for like 30 days as soon as we get.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you so mu, I mean.
Really, really appreciate it.
That would be a big help.
My grandkids live with me.
They won't see the camera we have up there, so.
I was happy to let them see it.
No, I mean, sometimes that's.
All the ones who watch our meetings now, they'll be full.
So in a case where it's a resident, they don't ticket them, right? They just warn them?
All right, so I.
It's discretion, so we, yeah, that's a whole different story.
I mean, I know it's a resident, but.
But if it's a resident, do you get like so many warnings until you get a ticket?
It doesn't work.
That's what I was asking, I don't know.
So I would say going forward, stay in touch with the chief, the chief will stay in touch with us, and hopefully, you know, with the camera and stuff, we can, can get.
Yeah, no, that's.
Solution and, and make it, you know, better.
John and I have had some conversations the last couple of weeks.
Okay.
Because we know.
You are correct, speed bumps cannot be from the.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have speed bumps anywhere in this town.
I mean, I talked to John, and this is, I showed him, I mean, these are on Amazon, you can buy them, they're $150, and you put, for three, six, for $300, you just put the temporary, he goes, yeah, but then who's liable?
Right, we.
There's a lot more to it than just that, you know, we're talking about plowing during the winter.
No, take them up in the winter.
Yeah, there's a lot of, I mean, those are, it's a lot more involved than that.
It's just not something that we utilize in town, but I think, you know, between, you know, John Haines and, and our police chief, they're gonna work with you to come up with something to make it better.
Yeah.
And, and we'll be in touch with him and, and, you know, hopefully.
I just don't want to see, I don't want to see anyone get hurt.
Right.
And are the worst killed, killed.
No, of course not. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Happy holidays.
Have a great holiday.
Well, no more after the first of the year.
Yeah, that goes without saying.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your help.
Have a good holiday.
You as well, happy new year.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
All right.
Lady.
We gotta wait till 6:45.
I can give Charlie's report if.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll do that quick. All right. So the latest update on the Central School Building Committee. The next step in the process is approval of the enrollment certificate, which states the expected enrollment in K-2 and K-3 during the next 10 years. It's been reviewed and agreed by the town and the MSBA, so the next step would be you.
Very, very long discussion about what potential enrollment could be. Other towns are facing this thing where they're building schools, Middleborough, their brand new school, they're already out of space, they're renting space, so we're so afraid, but the MSBA will also only give you so much of a percentage that, you know, you can increase based on their studies, so it was, it was a very long discussion on that.
Yeah, so it just needs your signature, and then we can move forward.
Okay.
The police department received a municipal road safety grant. The grant funding will be used by East Bridgewater Police to increase traffic enforcement with focus on impaired driving, distracted driving, seatbelt enforcement, and speed enforcement. So congratulations to them for that.
Yep, that's great.
So something that the Select Board needs to discuss at some point is IT costs for Plymouth, EB Hope Plymouth County.
PCO.
Outreach, yeah.
Right.
So Charlie's just looking for some direction as to what the board would like to do. Should Plymouth County, he calls it Plymouth County Hope, but it's PCO.
Yep.
Cover its own IT costs? Or the board can discuss recommending an appropriation for, from the opioid stabilization fund to PC Hope starting at FY '25.
And that's primarily related to email, the cost of email addresses, I believe, for the employees.
Yes, because they're increasing, they're hiring more employees, and the cost is increasing.
I think we have to bring in Representative from PCO Hope to discuss that. And I'm not positive if that opioid settlement that we have can be used for that, so we're gonna have to get a clarification on that.
Right.
That doesn't seem to be in the criteria that we used before, so.
So let's get that in the agenda for a future meeting.
Let's get them in here sometime in January.
Okay. Council on Aging recently received a couple of grants, one to fund their ongoing Memory Lane Cafe, and another is a Helping Hand Mini Grant from MassDOT for the 10% match fund from their van revolving account.
Right.
Update on the turf field, Brian Kylie has a schedule that will likely mean we will have to have a February town meeting. So the timeline goes anywhere from beginning December 8th and the final completion September 27th, 2024. So we'll have to schedule a February town meeting.
We have to schedule that, because I can't wait until May.
Not if you want to stick to the, not if you'd want completion by the beginning of next school year in September.
Okay.
So how much they can do and much to begin with?
But town meetings not till May?
Right.
Okay.
Well, they can do the scope of work, the bidding, once you get the bidding started, then things can kind of start happening.
Okay.
So you have to do that before you can start breaking ground, anyway.
All right.
That's it for me.
Any staff reports or announcements? No. No, nothing, huh? Okay. No, anyone like to sing the Christmas carol?
Come on, Janelle, you're up. Just stroll up there, sit around for a while, you know. You have to sing one song before we can open the public hearing.
It is, we don't have to wait till 6:45, two minutes.
All right, we got a two minute.
Any, any board discussions, David, what have you been doing? The last two weeks.
Nothing, absolutely nothing. One thing I'd like to, since we are winding down 2023, going back to almost two years ago, when Dale and myself said, what the heck, let's, let's do something for the bicentennial. And some idiot said, hey, you know, let's outdo everyone else, let's do something every month.
And you did.
And for those people that are old enough, that goes back to, you know, the Red Sox Impossible Dream in 1967, when no one thought that they could get away with doing that and winning everything and the whole show. That's what I relate, what happened with this bicentennial year. We went through, we continued, I cannot name how many people were involved in this, it would be here all night, but thanks to everyone that was involved in the core of it, and then all the small things that always have to be done when these things go off, it was an incredible year. I still speak to Dale, which is, Carol says she didn't think I ever would at the end of a year.
You can't not speak to Dale, because he just talks.
Well, he listens, no, he doesn't, he talks, you're right. But we do have some stuff still left over, hats, t-shirts, candles, stuff like that. We will make an announcement on our website, Facebook, when we're gonna have another pop-up liquidation sale type deal, hopefully within the next few weeks.
And if anybody needs anything for Christmas, they can contact you or Dale or.
And we do have.
Select Board Office, and we can make arrangements to get them something if they need it for the stocking stuffer. Those candles make great stocking stuffers, don't miss out.
We do have the bicentennial book, which was put together, the before and after.
It's a great book.
It's, it's a fantastic thing, they are available through the town clerk's office at $20 each. And there is a picture here, Dale, if we could, this is an old, old Select Board meeting from many, many years ago. For the record, my colleague is not here, I was not at that meeting, but Peter, Carol, and myself, you know.
Thank you, yeah, I grew it myself.
It's been a great year, thank you.
And they wonder why women don't run for this office. Why am I only the fourth one? Are you done?
I'm done.
And look at that, it's 6:45, all right, so we will open the public hearing, would you like to read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to requirements of MGL, Chapter 138, a public hearing will be held relative to the application for amendment, change of category from general on-premises wine in malt to general on-premises all alcohol. Ritter Farm Inc., doing business as Ritter Farm Learning Center and Golf Course, Janelle Rotandi, Manager Premises 322 Oak Street. A public hearing will be held at the Town Hall, First Floor Conference Room, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, on Monday, December 11th, 2023, at 6:45 PM. Carol Julius, Dave Sheedy, Peter Spigot Jr., Select Board Licensing Authority.
Great, thank you. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
So if you could just state your names for the record.
Sure, I was gonna say, Janelle Rotandi from Ritter Farm.
And Steve Saro with Ritter Farm also.
Okay. So all the paperwork's in order?
Yes.
Everything's all set, there's no butters here?
Yep, this is just for a change from wine and malt to all alcohol.
You want to have martinis now?
Not on golf course, no. What I would like, though, is just some clarification in that this is a change of my license, but you didn't, I wasn't on the list of approving for a renewal. So I don't know if I need to have, if you need to vote to renew me?
You weren't on the renewal?
I was not on the, and I, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that that
Hold on.
Doesn't cause a hiccup somewhere, it would have.
No, you should have been on the renewal.
Okay.
No, I thought I saw it too.
The Villa and Adria were both on there, but that's not the golf course.
Okay.
Hmm, okay. Right.
I just don't know if you can change me if I'm not active.
Well, you're active anyhow until December 31st.
Yeah, under.
What we'd have to do, I believe, is approve, close the public hearing and then approve.
Yeah.
We'll add that to an action item to renew it for next year. We'll have to close.
Yeah, just approve the renewal for the wine and malt for the, um, for their learning center and golf course.
Yeah, so we'll do that after we close this public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Janelle, did we inspect?
Do I have, did I?
Did we inspect, you know?
Yes, you did.
Okay.
Yeah, we have, um.
I was gonna say, I have the slip.
Yeah, all the paperwork's all in, everything's fine.
Yeah, I did, yeah.
We, we have planning and building, health, fire and police.
Yep, it's all signed off on.
All written reports approving.
Yeah.
I'm good.
All right, so we'll close the public hearing and then we'll go back and we'll vote on the other and then we can do this one.
Okay.
All right?
Sure.
I will, um, close the public hearing. Thank you for coming in, thanks for your patience.
Sure.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to approve the wine and malt license for Ritter Farm Learning Center and Golf Course.
Second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I will, I will make a motion to approve the change of the on premises wine and malt uh, to general on premises all alcoholic.
Second, any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there you go.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So we got free golf lessons for how long?
Well, I can offer you an alternative to a beer.
Okay, that would.
All right, that sounds better than golf to me, I just, thank you.
Thanks. Have a good holiday, folks.
Right, were you done with your discussions?
I am.
Sir? Um, I will, I just wanted to say, we went to the Old Colony Planning Council, um, annual awards dinner the other night. Um, I was there with Charlie and John Haines and Rachel Tedesco from the planning board and the town, um, won their impact award for the Route 18 corridor work that we did this year. And Peter unfortunately was out of town and wasn't there and I, I feel bad about that because he did so much of the work, but a lot of people did a lot of work on that, including the people who came out to town meeting and voted to support everything that was going on. So it was really nice to get that recognition from Old Colony Planning Council. They held us up as a shining example of what more towns should be doing, where we collaborated with Brockton and came together to, to do something that's really gonna change.
And that's what they should be doing.
So it was great.
That's what they should be doing.
Very nice and we have.
Put us up front.
A lovely little, little award that's on Rebecca's mantle now.
It's beautiful.
Yes, it's beautiful. So that was, um, well-received honors and we appreciate that from Old Colony Planning Council. And Christmas on the common was a great success, the Christmas parade was a great success.
Fantastic.
It feels like a lifetime ago already. Um, Kiwanis Christmas trees are all sold out, so.
That's great, it was, it was just a great year all around.
It was a good day, so.
I have one more.
Yes.
Thing actually that just came to mind. Um, Old Colony Planning Council is currently in the process of developing a master plan for the town of East Bridgewater. Um, the survey is, we are urging residents, um, to take the survey, it's online. A representative from OCPC actually came to the office today and dropped off multiple paper copies.
Oh, great.
So if you don't have access to the web or prefer handwriting it, uh, please come to our office, the select board office and pick up a copy.
Yeah, I, I took it online, it's, I mean, it's very, it's very easy.
It's very simple to take online.
It is, and it doesn't take a lot of time and it asks some really important questions and you a chance to really tell us because we're moving forward with this process.
Yep.
And the more people that give us their input, the more, I think it will feel like it really reflective of what the community wants.
Can give your opinion and.
Yeah, we want to know. And you can be anonymous.
Yes.
I, I think the last master plan we did was when I was upstairs.
Oh, boy, it was a long time ago now.
On the planning board, which was a century ago anyhow.
Yeah. All right, well, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Happy holidays, everybody, happy new year.
We will probably see you, watch us, we may have another meeting to, uh, discuss a few more things before the end of the year.
Hopefully not.
We will.
We will, happy new year. Good night, thank you.